Good morning. I call to order the recess meeting at April the 8th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Here.
Immequation and pledge be conducted by Commissioner Hilton this morning, so all please rise.
Our invitation this morning will be given by Bishop Kevin Wallace of Redemption to the Nation's Church.
So, bowerheads, Father, we're thankful today for your goodness and mercy that are new every morning, and we're grateful, Lord, for these leaders that have been elected to lead our communities. I pray the grace of God upon their life and the wisdom of God in all their decision-making. Lord, we know that we make decisions, but ultimately, the government rests upon your shoulders, Lord. We're asking today that all that we do bring honor and glory to you and would bring a blessing and benefit to the citizens of our communities. We ask your grace upon this in Jesus' name, amen.
Please face and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank Commissioner Hilton. Mr. Clerk, I'm not showing any recess agenda item, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. With that, we'll now adjourn recess and go into agenda session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Here.
We have two presentations on our agenda today. The first presentation is Kevin Hyde with Partnership for Family, Children, and Adults. So, Mr. Hyde, if you'll come forward, you have 10 minutes. Could you name an address to start?
5600 Brainer Road, and I'm the CEO of Partnership for Families, Children, and Adults. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak today about supporting some of the essential services that we provide on behalf of the people of Hamilton County. What are we talking about today? We're talking about victim support services, specifically support for the continuum of care for victims that starts with our crisis hotline, 24/7, probably the most important call someone can make in their life. Where it triages to our Rape Crisis Center and Domestic Violence Shelter. Our Domestic Violence Shelter is the only domestic violence shelter in Hamilton County. Let me tell you what that means. As opposed to other homes that support people, a domestic violence shelter has two criteria. One, that there is an active abuser and a high lethality assessment from our law enforcement authorities. So, that's what we do with all of the protocols for safety and security that no one else provides. We also are the only rape crisis center. We do those that are 13 and above, traditionally called adults, and our partners in the Children Advocacy Center do those that are below 13 years of age. For those who know the nuances of Tennessee law, between 13 years old and 17 years old, some go to Children's Advocacy Center and some come to us based on the unique circumstances of each case and the law. The problem is significant in our state. I will not read all of the things on this slide. This is the most recent data published in 2023, and we don't have nationwide comparisons yet. But from the previous set of data, just for a point of reference, Tennessee was 10th in the nation per capita in domestic violence, and unfortunately, 6th in the nation in domestic violence that results in death. What does that look like locally? Well, these slides, many of you that I've had the opportunity to talk with, are what we do on an annual basis. These are the last fiscal year data for us, and I would just point out it is different from the Hamilton County data, which is published on a calendar year. Ours ends on 30 June, in case you're comparing numbers. Don't know what happened to the screen there. But there are two, I'm sorry. There it is, it's back up now. I'd like to draw your attention without reading the numbers to a couple of items. One, when you look at the Rape Crisis Center, we did 137 forensic exams last year. That means we hold the TBI evidence kits. We do the exams for victims that come in 24/7. We are the start of that chain of custody, and that is the key element that results ultimately in justice for the victim. That number was up 26% over three years. Down to the bottom of the slide, if you look at the number of bed nights, almost 13,500. That's a measure of how much activity there is in our domestic violence shelter. That is up 66% over three years, and a year-over-year increase right in that line of 22%. A few other things that you may not know that that represents. Half of the people on any given day in the domestic violence shelter are children, and the average duration is four to six months, because people that flee literally for their lives often come, and they're not the primary breadwinner. And even if they have a car, the car may not be in their name, and hence, we move them from the shelter to a point of safety, stability, where a place they have to live that is safe and the ability to support themselves. So, that is a pretty significant impact to our community. This is what we bring to our county on any given day. For those of you who, when I first started this brief in October of '23, to meet that load, our staff has gone up from 34 to 40. The rooms and beds there are not enough. We're working on that with a long-term project. But this shelter has been in use by us for 40 years in providing this capability, and you can see the services there, and I will point out the link to the justice that is given to these victims. What does the funding situation look like? As most of you know, federal funding, there are a lot of recent, I think a nice way to put it would be perturbations. But even before that, there had been a three-year decline that you see mentioned on this slide in Victim of Crime Act funds, which are not taxpayer dollars, but funds from court cases where the fees and fines come back to help victims. That funding for us over the three fiscal years you see has declined $720,000. There are a couple of points we'd like to highlight. One is that these are essential public services. I'm not here for our other programs and our 12-program lineup, but only those for the Rape Crisis Center and Domestic Violence Shelter, because those are programs that if we didn't provide it on behalf of our citizens as your contractor, the city would have to, or the county would have to. So, what does that mean? We bring in about $3.3 million a year, and what we are looking for from the county, and by the way, you'll see on the next side, the city, is $330,000, 10%. The other thing that is not mentioned on this slide is that we are coming back in FY '26, where to get the federal dollars that we get flowing through, we're required to come up with a match, which the intent of that is, if the federal government kicks in money, that the local governments put in a little bit as well to help us meet that. Without county money on the previous side, that leaves us with a significant deficit that I probably can't manage around. With your support, we can close that gap to what I will call a manageable figure that through various things we can do, staffing or otherwise, we can manage and continue to meet the need for the growing demand in our county. This is the request. I will go ahead, I've got a few minutes, a couple of minutes remaining here, and I will leave the slides on some of the stories here while I take any of your questions.
See any lights for questions?
Well, thank you, I will.
Commissioner Baker just put his light on.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hyde. I had the pleasure, I guess you called that, you did a great job on Friday.
Oh, thank you.
Presentation. I guess, Lee, are these numbers that we will be seeing in the budget?
Yes, these are requests that we will be seeing in the budget.
Okay, so we'll be discussing. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Kevin. Follow-up on conversations you and I've been having already. How far along, and have we gained any ground on the plans to transition the Rape Crisis Center over to the Family Justice Center?
Thank you for that. Yes, we have. We had a meeting on Monday of this week with the city engineer. The task orders for the follow-on architecture and engineering have already been sent forward and are signed, and the memorandum of understanding between us and the city, because that is their property, went out this morning. The timeline for that, the city engineer is already progressed with, and we are on a timeline for about a year and a half, which is almost all due to the engineering, contract letting, construction renovation, et cetera. But the design has been accepted, and we're about at the 45% design point.
So, the FY '26 that you're presenting here is in consideration of that center being up and running at the Family Justice Center?
It is, and it will not be open and us moving in until the end of FY '27.
Okay, at the end. And then your capital raise for that, or have you firmed up numbers yet as to what that entire project's going to cost?
The city engineer has a preliminary estimate that that project is going to come in all total under $1 million, and almost all of that is construction, utilities, sewer, piping, and things of that nature, modifications to the facility to house the Rape Crisis Center.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for what you do. I have been out there touring the place several times, and what you do is phenomenal out there. I appreciate what you do for our community. But I'm going to ask you a financial question. So, to understand the ask today that you just showed us, the total is $330,000?
All right. From the county?
Yeah, and that is, but then I heard you say that it was smaller the first year, and then it was 330 the second year, is that correct?
Last year, you graciously provided us funding for $250,000. So, yes, this is an increased request due to the continued decline in federal funding and the increase in workload.
So, an additional $330,000?
No, sir, total, total, total.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. And then the other thing is, you said it was crucial to, when you get federal funding, that the local steps up and has a certain amount of match. What does this pertain to as far as increased revenue for you from the federal government overall?
Yeah, it's not increased revenue, but if we do not meet that match, we get decreased funding for the grants that we do have. So, every time we submit for reimbursement from the federal government to get, if the total pool of dollars is 100, to get their 80 that they're committed, if I do not provide documentation that we have brought in 20 from somewhere else as a match, we proportionally are reduced in federal funding.
So, is there any federal funding at risk here?
To the extent we don't bring in a match, we lose the federal funding proportionally. It's a proportional decrease from 80/20. So, for every $20 that we don't bring in, if we only brought 10, it would be a proportional reduction in the federal funding.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm asking is, do you have a projection of how much total dollars that would be if?
Yes. So, the total budget that we're bringing in from other entities is 3.3 million for next year. We're asking you for 330. Of the various sources of that funding, just over 2 million is federal grants. And if you noticed on the slide, we have actually increased our fundraising in the local community to $400,000 is what that block represented on the slide.
Thank you, sir.
To one other point that, since you're asking budget questions, about 83% of the services are in Hamilton County. We serve Hamilton and Marion, 6% are Marion. We don't bill you for that. We have other funding sources for Marion County. The remainder are in equal trade. For instance, Hamilton County citizens who cannot even be safe here because of the high threat to them, we will send via our nationwide network somewhere else at no charge, and we likewise accept the reciprocal person from them. So, when you see the numbers, essentially, all of this money stays locally, with the exception of Marion, and we have other fundraising sources through the United Way to cover that. We're not asking this body to fund anything except to support the citizens of Hamilton County.
Okay, Mr. Hyde, that is all the lights I see. Number one, thank you for what you do. You've got, you're a veteran, is that correct?
I am.
What branch?
32 and a half years in the Air Force.
And what did you leave ranked as?
Brigadier General.
So, thank you for your service throughout the country. Thank you so much for your service.
Well, thanks for your continued support, and thanks for the support of this county. It's a pleasure to serve here now.
I enjoyed Friday's event. Ms. Cooper did an outstanding job. So, thank you, Ms. Cooper, in partnering with the city and reading the proclamation. So, I think it was a great event. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, our next presentation will be CADUS. Did you start with your name and address, and you have 10 minutes?
Hi, good morning. Brad Franks, 207 Spears Avenue. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for CADUS, and we're here just to thank the County Commission for allocating $500,000 of the opioid abatement settlement dollars to our sober living apartments that we just broke ground on a few weeks ago. So, we currently have 24 sober living apartments at CADUS, and we're adding 16 more Doors of Hope for people. The, you're probably all aware of the opioid issue and substance use issue that affect all of our, a majority of our families. We all have a family member, I'd say, that's suffered with substance use. And CADUS serves several, couple thousand people each year to combat that. We, you, you're, as a county, we're working toward being part of the answer, not issue. So, with the settlement dollars, we're able to provide services which include safe and affordable housing for our clients. We, I brought one of our client, previous clients that we ended up hiring with me today. His name is Greg Phillips, and I'd like to introduce him and let him share a little bit about his story.
Good morning. My name is Greg Phillips. I was a recipient of the apartments when I came to CADUS in the early stages of it, and it was instrumental to my recovery from alcohol and drugs, and it really helped me put my life back together with a long-term plan. You know, statistics say that if you stay sober over a year, you have about a 60% chance of staying sober. And so, with the apartments, I was able to stay in an environment that kept me around people who are sober with the support system of counselors, therapists, on a day-to-day basis. And I was held accountable, too, with alcohol and drug testing in sober living apartments. And not to mention, they're in a great place on North Shore in Chattanooga as well. So, it was very instrumental into me being able to stay sober, and I had tried years before to get sober in life, and I would relapse, I'd have maybe, you know, a little sobriety. But it was really a turning point for me in my life, and it really helped me to stay sober. So, I want to thank you guys for the money that we get and for all the support that we give. It's really been a big help. And now that I'm a navigator in the field, working in the hospitals, trying to put people into treatment, help them get their lives back together. The apartments are instrumental into giving them some hope. A lot of them are homeless, a lot of them became homeless due to alcohol and drugs, due to circumstances sometimes out of their control, loss of jobs and things like that, and they've turned to alcohol and drugs. So, it's, I can give them a hope of our halfway house that's 90 days, then we got sober living apartments where you can stay a year, 18 months, two years. And they can really get their life back in track, get their careers back on track, save some money, get their home, you know, and get their dignity back. So, I really appreciate you guys for a lot of that money. Thank you.
I'll foot your car with CADUS, and we'd be honored to answer any questions you have about our apartments or about CADUS. While you're thinking about that, I'll tell you that we're not proponents of alcohol and drugs, but we don't mind sugar. We've got a cake in the back, and we would love for y'all to have some now, take some home. So, that's just part of the thank you, so.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Franks. I remember you from many years ago. You may not remember me, but I do as a young person. I think it's wonderful what you do. I've had some experience through the years with some of your clients and trying to advise people to go there. I've worked with Mary Kay closely, I think she's still with you. Sir, thank you for not only what you're doing, but for your willing to share your testimony, and that's what it is, a testimony. And someone who's gone through the experiences you've gone through, I think other people can identify, they can see your success story, and they can be inspired by it. Thank you all for what you do very much.
Mr. Baker?
Oh, I think we probably had to pull the money back, because I'm trying to lose weight, and you're bringing a cake. I mean, come on.
Well, Commissioner Baker, thank you so much for coming to our groundbreaking, too.
Absolutely. It, known you a long time. I know how skilled and capable and caring you are, and I appreciate that. Mr. Phillips, congratulations. I know it's not been an easy road, but that's why CADUS is here, and that's why you're now a part of it, is to share your testimony with other folks that need some help. And so, congratulations on that. Quite often, we receive money, or we give money, and we never hear back from the recipients. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for showing us what our money is doing to help improve our community. So, thank you for being proactive.
Well, it's an honor to be a part of this community, and it's an honor to serve this commission. And I promise you that every single dollar that you allocated to us, we will spend it wisely.
Hey, I don't see any more lights. Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you for your story, your testimony, and for the value that you give our community. So, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, for the record, we're sure Mr. Highlander is present. Okay. With that, we'll move forward to minutes. We'll be looking at entering the minutes next week for the recess meeting in March the 26th, 2025, the agenda session from March the 26th, 2025, and the regular meeting for April the 2nd, 2025. We'll also be looking at entering two reports into the record next week. With that, we'll move into resolutions for the committee as a whole. First resolution is 425-15, so Madam Clerk, if you'll read the caption.
Resolution 425-15, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and owes of notaries previously elected, and the oath of Deputy Sheriff.
Okay. See no lights, see no one standing, just as a reminder for the general public. Anybody in the general public is encouraged to ask questions or make comments on any of the resolution items. I just need you, when the agenda item is brought up, is to be standing against this wall to be recognized, okay? So, no one's standing to be recognized. We'll take this up next week, so Madam Clerk, we'll go to 425-16.
Resolution 425-16, a resolution confirming the appointment of County Commissioner Joe Graham and County Auditor Chris McCullough, and the reappointments of Chief Financial Officer Lee Browner, County Attorney Reuben Taylor, and County Clerk William Bill Knowles as members of the Hamilton County Ethics Committee for a term of one year, beginning April 16, 2025, and ending April 15, 2026.
Okay, see no lights on for conversation, no one standing. We'll take this up next week. We'll move to the last committee as a whole item. The last as a committee as a whole item is 425-37.
Resolution 425-37, a resolution to authorize payment of $46,500 to Kristen Cruz and attorneys Derek Nelson, Warren &amp; Griffin, PC, for full and final settlement of any and all claims arising from a motor vehicle accident involving a Hamilton County Parks and Recreation vehicle on or about the 25th day of October, 2022.
Okay, see no lights for conversation, no one standing. We will take this up next week. That concludes our committee as a whole items. We do, we will have committee meetings following the agenda here. And I guess building and economics will be first. We've got two resolutions, Commissioner Hilton, so 425, 17, and 18, we'll take them up first. Finance, we got 14 resolutions. So, Commissioner Smith, we'll take those up in second. And then Commissioner Chauncey, we've got four resolutions with roads and zoning. We'll take them up following finance.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we're going to branch this off and go back to the conference room. Is there anyone here in opposition that want to speak for any of the zoning items that we have here today? Okay, is applicant here? I know Mr. Price is one of them. We got, okay, who's the other applicant? I see you pointing. Okay, we're going to meet back in the conference room as soon as we adjourn here, and it's an open-door meeting, so members of the public can join us.
Sounds good.
Thanks, sir.
All right. At the end of the committee meetings, we will have a legal meeting that will follow all committee meetings that will be in the conference room. All right. That said, we'll move into announcements. Commissioner Shipley?
No announcements.
Mr. Baker?
Just a reminder, April 17th, 9:00 a.m., Audit Committee meeting at the McDaniel Building. Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Mackey?
Mr. Chair, there were two outstanding things happen for Chattanooga and Hamilton County this last week, one of which, the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, as you well know. One of which, the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, as you well know, they won the National Invitation Tournament, Basketball Tournament. And I'm hoping that when the chair come to you, that you'll announce that other achievement, which has to do with us being named a, the first National Park City in America. Outstanding.
Good deal. Appreciate it. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mackey, will the championship team receive rings as well?
They probably will, but not from Hamilton County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I just wonder if Commissioner Mackey is going to bring the team in here for us, we can.
We'll make that happen.
Okay.
And Chattanooga State, we are involved with the US Skills Competition and we will definitely win some things and bring Chattanooga State representatives who will be in the job market and show them off. So they are coming.
Mr. Sharp?
Go Mox. We're going to have to get on that because there is a hot commodity on that Mox team that might not be around very long. What's that? Tough. Oh, yeah. Big time. So, all right. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Hilton? No announcements. Mr. Chauncey?
No one else.
Mr. Highlander?
Thank you. I want to thank Matt Foles for setting up a joint meeting with the Education, the Board of Education and the Commissioners. I look forward to having all of you there if you can make it. And thank you, Chairman, for making it possible for us to have a meal provided. Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday, the presentation that Ms. Cooper put on, or the ceremony, I guess, at the courthouse, I usually attend that every year, but this year I didn't get to attend because I volunteer at the elementary school and coached two Green Pre teams. And a Green Pre is, there's like 35 local schools that participate. They build their own race cars and they're electric. They're all electric, like electric go-karts. And then we compete twice a year against all the other schools. So I apologize for missing that ceremony Friday, but I was out there in the hot sun at Volkswagen with those kids all day and I wanted to commend those children. We, we overcame some pretty good controversy. One, one of our drivers ran over a man and put him in the ambulance and another one hit a light pole. And then, and then the car tore up. I have two cars, two teams, and both cars tore up twice. So we overcame all that and still came in fifth. So, so that was pretty good. Not to the guy that got hit. I apologize for that. But, but also want to thank Green Spaces for, for, I've been involved with this now since the beginning, which was, I think it was 17 or 18, and it is a great, great learning tool for these children to learn about electric cars and learn about mechanics. Most of the kids that join our teams don't even know how to, don't even know what a screwdriver is, let alone know how to use a screwdriver. And we tear the cars down, we put the cars back together and we over, overcome. Our cars are very old because we're one of the first teams that were in there. So, so our cars are, worked on lots, as you can tell. But, but these children are the ones that do the work. I just guide them and direct them and show them what tool to use or how to, don't let them use the power tools. So I use the power tools for them. But, but also a big shout out to Volkswagen. Volkswagen took, and they carved out a, a part of their parking lot out there for us. Every year they do that. But they also, with Green Spaces, has to have a whole lot of equipment, you know, barriers and things to put up the race, you know, set up all the races. And there's three different kinds of races for our age group and then the next day they do the middle and high school. So, so it's a full, full gamut of things that the students get to do. But Volkswagen has not only partnered with us, but they, they provided trailers out there and a place to store all our equipment and, and then they're a big part of the, the races every year. So, or that we have twice a year. So I want to just give a big shout out to Volkswagen and thank you for that as well. Other than that, nothing to report. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Graham, thank you. Years past, I had done that and I, I thank you so much for all your efforts in that. I, I will say one thing that I had to do was teach them how to guide the machines and I'm sure you do that well too.
Ernie Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, you announced about the legal committee, the legal meeting after everything is finished. Thank you.
Mayor Womp?
Mayor, thank you for the tour yesterday at Udoa Middle School. A great time. Great, great school, great facility leader and principal there. So enjoyed their time there. So also want to thank the participants for the Area 9 meeting on Monday. Think it had a great turnout. Think they presented some, some, some good plans and look forward to, to, to seeing what moves forward from there. Then the National, Chattanooga National Park City, Matt Foles, you know anything about that? Do you? Can you give us like a Reader's Digest 32nd version of it?
Matt Foles, Director of Parks, 1215 Market Street. So, yeah, so the city of Chattanooga, working for this for at least 18 months, but you could probably argue 30 years. You know, going from the dirtiest city in America to now the first National Park City in the US, the third in the world. So National Park City Foundation is based in London. There are certain criteria that the city had to meet and the goal is to kind of continue the story. It's not what we're doing about today, it's what we're doing about tomorrow and we plan to keep doing. So hopefully that'll raise the profile and some of our park initiatives and just tell everybody what a great city we're in. We're also very fortunate that the appraisals have already gone out. So that didn't impact any folks that live in the city. That didn't increase their property value too much with that announcement. So, so, yeah, so we're excited, but there's more work to be done. And I just want to thank the Commission for supporting the parks in Hamilton County as well.
Thank you, Matt. You're, you're a true GM for, for the county. So Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, Matt, I'd just like to thank you, Commissioner Highlander and Chairman. I'd like to thank you for the beautiful sign that you replaced with Bobby Dunn. So on behalf of our district, Commissioner Mackey, Commissioner Highlander, we want to thank you. That was really beautiful and I don't know how many accolades we have to give this man. He certainly does a wonderful job for this county. So we, we want to say thank you once again for the job that you do around here. Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
I too want to thank Matt. He's done several things for my district and he's working on several things for me right now. And I, I truly want to thank him. He's a, he's a total prince of a man, but he is, he's a, an asset to Hamilton County. But also, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to congratulate, yesterday was city elections and, and I was a little bit involved. And I want to congratulate new Councilwoman Burrs and Ms. Knowles, Councilwoman Knowles. She regained her seat. So congratulations to them.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. Commissioner Beck beat me to the punch on that with, with Bobby Dunn honoring. But also there's one other thing that I neglected and I apologize, Chairman. But my wife and daughter and I attended the, the Bible in the Schools luncheon. And for a hu, over 100 years, 103 years, they, this group has legally provided, legally provided teachers for our school systems to teach the Bible, its literature and its history. And I'm just so thankful for that. Any help that we can give them, I think is wonderful. Also, you may want to commend my wife. As of tomorrow, she will have put up with me for 49 years. So if you happen to run into her, thank her for her constancy. Thank you.
Congratulations. Happy, happy early anniversary. That's awesome. 49 years. That's, that's amazing. Okay, with that, we'll move forward to the public portion. Anyone from the general public like to present anything to the Commission? You have three minutes. Just need your name and address. Time will begin when you start with your name and address.
Vince Butler, 6504 Lake Shadows Circle, Hickson, Tennessee. For those who don't know who I am, I'm Vince Butler with the Coolidge National Medal of Honor Heritage Center. For those that came out to our grand opening for the Captain Larry Taylor exhibit, I want to say thank you. It's an incredible day for us, but an incredible day for our community in honoring a great man who received the Medal of Honor for his action during Vietnam War. If you haven't seen the exhibit, I invite you to come out and see it. It's pretty incredible when you see a life-size Cobra helicopter hanging from the ceiling of the Heritage Center. And look straight up there and you see Captain Taylor in the pilot seat. So it's pretty impressive, but more importantly, it's a great opportunity to share his story for future generations as kids visit the Heritage Center, come through the education program, learn about the six character traits of patriotism, citizenship, courage, sacrifice, integrity and commitment. Some quintessential American values that we sometimes forget, that we all have them within ourselves. But how do we learn to act upon that when facing an extraordinary challenge? You don't have to be in the armed forces to show those values, to put them into action, to make an impact. It's something we do every day in our life. So thank you all for coming to the grand opening. We did have a gift and the reason I'm here is for those who could not come, I wanted to make sure I came here and say thank you for making that exhibit possible. Thank you to Mayor Womp and the County Commissioners. But those that were on the commission back in 2018, thank you. Because your support during the Capitol campaign made the Heritage Center possible. We wouldn't be here today without the Commissioners back in 2018. So this is a special challenge coin that we did. There's 100 of them. So each one of y'all, if y'all came Friday, you've got one. So I don't have another one for you. But I wanted to make sure I come here today and say thank you. If you see it, on one side, you'll see Dark Horse 32. That's Captain Taylor's call sign. And, and then it basically, if you don't know what a challenge coin is, it's something that you need to keep in your pocket. So if you ever happen to be around a bunch of veterans having a drink or refreshments, if a person slaps a challenge coin down on the table and you don't have yours, you're buying. So I'd encourage you to, and if you do have one, then whoever laid it down first has to buy. So I do encourage you to keep it with you. But it is a small token of our appreciation. So I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna handle, your name's written on them. So I'm just gonna put them up here and let you pass them down. Just wanted to say, if you want to come, feel free to call me. I'm sure you can find my number somewhere on the internet and I would love to give you a guided tour. But again, thank you for the support of the exhibit because it wouldn't have happened without Hamilton County and the city of Chattanooga. So thank you.
Just, just as a reminder for the Commissioners, by commission rules, when we do the public comments, the Commission is, is not supposed to respond. And I do have a couple of lights on, but due to, due to the nature, I will allow this. So Commissioner Baker, do you have something you want to add real quick?
Yeah, I, I really want to come see it. I was in New York City when you did the opening and I hated to miss it. Did have a quick question. What's the, the new place in Arlington? Is that, is that a competitor?
Chattanooga is the birthplace, so we're the first.
That's right, okay.
That's all that really matters to me. There is actually museums all over the country. There's one in Mount Pleasant and at the Battleship at Patriots Point. There's one out in Boulder, Colorado. So there's actually, believe it or not, there's probably about 12 Medal of Honor museums. But we're proud to say that the birthplace of the Medal of Honor, the history of that medal started in Chattanooga 163 years ago. If you don't know this already, every living Medal of Honor recipient will be here in Chattanooga for the convention. September 30th through October the 4th, where they're coming to the birthplace where it all started. So while Arlington is another museum, we'd like to say we're the first and the best.
I agree. So look forward to that tour.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. Sir, I, I was privileged to be at the opening, the grand opening, and it was awe-inspiring. I mean, it was absolutely wonderful and, and several of us got to see Captain Taylor when we had the parade honoring him and, and very rightfully deserved. And I am just so thankful that we can honor our people. Having a grandson in the military right now, I, I, it makes me even more appreciative of what you all have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
All right. Y'all have a good day.
Appreciate you. Okay, next, you have three minutes. The time will begin as you start with your name and address.
Terry on Villa Terrace. There was probably 150 people on the Snow Hill. There was two meetings. And one was at a church on Snow Hill Road and one was at the fire department. And the people were against having the rezoning for Snow Hill Road and the changing to having the RV storage area. And I couldn't find that on our paper for today, but I was told that that was supposed to be on there.
Okay. Just for clarity, I'll, it's not on today's agenda. It goes in front of the Planning Commission Monday. You know, this body will not see it until May. All right, anyone else? You get three minutes and it starts with your, when you announce your name and address.
My name is Gregory Buckles and I'm representing Diversified Supply. Address is 210 North Highland Park. The owner of our company, Dan Anderson, has a diversified supply company there, which is a wholesale electrical supply company. It's been in the business for 37 years and it's been, I guess, to me, a hidden jewel here in, in Chattanooga. And I just want to highlight that and just come with an issue that we'd like to share with you all. Diversified Supply, its main supplier, main company has been, has had a 37-year relationship with TVA. And it has grown in the 37 years to have an office in Alabama, Cincinnati, Ohio, Aiken, South Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina. But our corporate office is right here in Chattanooga. And the company has grown to the point where we're doing about $160 million in sales. And we, we, but our, most of our sales are outside of Tennessee and throughout the country. We're even doing international work as well. But we're busting out of the seams here in our own backyard here, even though we don't, not do much volume here. But there's a facility that's, that I think you all control, the old animal shelter that's right there. It's right beside our facility there. So we would definitely be interested in talking with the board about purchasing that property to help us expand and keep our jobs here and in our home base. And my goal as the outside sales manager is to, is to increase our sales in our local area with the businesses and organizations here. We, we supply electrical supplies and other things, the nuclear sites and do things all over the country. And, but we definitely are a Chattanooga-based company. And a side note, the owner of our company, his, his father, he's one of those, played in the Negro leagues back in the day. So we're excited to get him recognized with the new stadium here in town. And I've got brochures in my card for all the Commissioners here. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hilton is our buildings chairman. So I'll, if you'll make sure that your card, you get Commissioner Hilton.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll see anyone else with no other business. We'll be adjourned till April the 16th at 9:30 AM. We'll now begin our committee meetings and we'll begin with building economics. Madam Clerk?